Four, three, two, one.
Hello and good evening. Welcome to the Fremont Unified School District and the City of Fremont Liaison Committee Meeting of March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. We will, I will call the meeting to order at five-thirty-two. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's see, I'm going to call on our newest trustee, Zhang. Would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation upon, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Sandoval, would you do the roll call of the council and the trustees, please?
Certainly. Trustee Zhang.
Here.
Trustee Campbell.
Here.
Trustee, my apologies, Councilmember Sawon.
Present.
Councilmember Kang.
Present.
Thank you. Mrs. Sandoval, do we have any public comments?
We do. I'm seeing one hand at this point. Ms. Victoria Burbacarera. Two hands now. Victoria, go ahead.
Thank you, Patty, and good evening, council and trustees, along with me and, and school district staff, Victoria Burbacarera.
Oh, Victoria, I believe you've just become muted again. Victoria.
You're on mute.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have the ability to unmute myself if I was muted by.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me have done that. I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. Victoria Burbacarera, speaking on behalf of the Fremont Unified District Teachers Association. And I had a couple things I wanted to ask about. I think one is, as we are looking at so many of our committees and structures, and I know that our school board trustees, you know, spent quite a bit of time talking about our committees, thinking about the purpose, you know, looking at what protocols they would have. I'm just, I am having watched and engaged in these liaison meetings now for, for a few years. I'm still unclear kind of as the, how it looks in that it appears that each group just kind of presents to the other something that we could already have watched. I would hope that you would be more of a steering committee as the liaisons and you would discuss ideas, even if it was just at the end of the meeting, but that a good amount of your time could be talking about areas that you could collaborate and how you might want to set future agendas rather than simply just updating each other, gaining information and then kind of leaving the meeting. So that leads into my second area that I'm, I'm, would like to ask about, and that is on the work that we had talked about doing stemming from the reevaluation and perhaps reconfiguration of the joint SRO program. So our trustees talked about how even if we did bring it back, which I believe it will be funded at half, half for, for next year, how that will look, what sort of training may take place, kind of what sort of changes that we may need, but also considering that the school district has some, some one-time funds to help our students that are suffering because of the pandemic today, what might we do collaborating with the city on their mobile health unit? So it was just, it was something that I had read actually in Chief Peterson's announcement of retiring, that it was something that she had actually worked to start in two thousand seventeen. So I'm wondering if the city would be, you know, willing to talk about that with the district since it was one area. I hate to think that we're bringing students back on campus who may be in crisis, knowing that, for example, CPS reports have gone down, but we know that students are more in crisis than ever. Families are more in crisis than ever. How can we proactively and warmly welcome our students back with care rather than punitive measures? And, and so I'm just hoping that you might engage in areas that both the city and the school district consider moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Burbacarera. Patty, you're on mute.
Sorry. Milka, see?
Hello, my name is Milka Chinan. I live here in Fremont and my daughter is a first grader. I'm here to ask the district to reopen our public schools in Fremont. My nephew, third grade, has autism and has socially regressed in the past year. He's part of our social bubble and his parents are very worried because he lost interest in interacting with other kids. They're also concerned for their youngest daughter in kindergarten, who's not in the special ed program, but is also suffering the negative impacts of school closures, like introspection, lack of interest in physical activities or in socializing with my kids. My own seven-year-old daughter asks me every week when school will reopen because she doesn't understand why her youngest brother is physically able to attend his preschool since September, but she cannot. What am I supposed to say to her? Sorry, sweetie, the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics and, and articles on the Lancet said that it's safe to reopen schools, but you're not still allowed to go back. Finally, someone very close to my family committed suicide recently. And this is why his father said at his teenage son memorial service, quote, "I know the lack of social contact ate away at his heart. I consider my son to be a COVID casualty. He didn't contract the virus, but he told me, 'I need to find better ways to deal with all this stress and pain,' end of quote. Trustees, council members, Ms. Burbacarera, the struggle and the pain our children are suffering are real. Each day our schools remain closed, our children's emotional and mental being and ability to learn fall behind. And that's why I urge the district and the teachers' union to find a common ground. And we mean focus on the basic items where a safe in-person instruction return as quickly and responsibly as possible. Thank you."
Thank you.
I do.
We have one more.
I do have one more. Kathy Kimberlin, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. This is Kathy Kimberlin. Tonight, I'm speaking with you, speaking to you as president of the Fremont Education Foundation. And it's been a while since I've kind of tuned in with all of you to let you know what, what the Fremont Education Foundation has been up to. And in a year of most extreme measures, I think that we were able to still be a really good partner with the school district and therefore with our city because the residents are in our city. And really, really am very proud of the work that our board has done. We had a couple programs. In case you don't know, I'll quickly let you know that we started the campaign in the fall for the twenty dollars in two thousand twenty. We thought we couldn't ask for a ton of money. So we thought if we asked for twenty dollars from everyone, we would, we would get, that would be a better ask. And we, we had partners, corporate partners with Facebook and Fremont Bank. They each came in with twenty-five thousand dollars each. That was phenomenal. And then basically another fifty thousand was raised in the community. And, and that money was used for Chromebooks for students. The next thing we did was the teacher tech giveaway. And the reason we did that is because we had funds left from our teacher grant program from the spring because with COVID, they weren't, they weren't figuring out how to run a class, not how to apply for a grant. So we had twenty-four thousand dollars left there. And we did a teacher tech giveaway, which had the most responses ever. Within what, less than a day, we had five hundred people applying. And it was really, really simple and easy way for them to answer three questions and let us know if you would like, if you can use a doc camera, a laptop or an iPad. And we had such a great response that we were able with twenty-four thousand dollars to provide devices for forty-one teachers throughout the district at every level. So that, that was really phenomenal. And the thanks that we received was phenomenal. So therefore that helped our teachers, helped our students. And then the last thing I wanted to tell you about is, this is such a perfect time for any organization to review what they're doing, see if what they're doing is current. And what we've done in the past is the after-school ban program, the innovative education teacher grants, and the Guy Emmanuel Sports Scholarship Fund. And so we had a stakeholder meeting with the superintendent and Facebook and Fremont Bank and teachers and directors and music instructors to see what, what do we want to do for the next following school year. And we had a very stimulating conversation, came away with some great takeaways, and just want you to know that Fremont Education Foundation is trying to stay current for the current needs of the people in Fremont, the students in Fremont, the teachers in Fremont. And thank you for listening to me tonight. And I'll, I'll see you all again real soon, I'm sure. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Kimberlin.
I guess there's public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sandoval. So at this, at this time on the agenda, I'd like to introduce Alameda County Public Health Vaccine Update Presentation. Alec Toon. Alec, are you there? Oh, okay.
Good evening, Honorable Chair Campbell and honorable members of the committee. I'd like to provide a brief update on COVID response from the city side and then hand it over to our partners at Alameda County Health Services Agency, who really have been the lead in this effort locally. By way of introduction, my name is Alec Toon. I work here as the Emergency Services Manager for the City of Fremont at the Fire Department's Office of Emergency Services, recently joined the city in November. Our Office of Emergency Services, under the direction of Fire Chief Jacobson and pursuant to his strategic plan, one of the core goals is emergency management and disaster resilience. And so we're based in the fire department, but we're really a citywide function in coordinating response to disasters, preparedness response and recovery before, during and after the disaster. So our scope is pretty broad. Some focal areas, as we look ahead, are developing our emergency plans further in, on sort of a functional level and building out our procedures as well as the readiness of our Emergency Operations Center. We've been very involved with COVID-nineteen response since March of two thousand twenty, when the city manager proclaimed a local emergency ratified by the, the council, which remains in effect. We've been at it with a COVID response and holding bi-weekly emergency or weekly Emergency Operations Center calls. We're activated virtually. That's, our Emergency Operations Center is really kind of our citywide hub to keep everybody in the loop and kind of guide the city's response. Couple of focal areas. The Fremont Fire Department has been partnering with the Howlers Pharmacy here in Fremont. And so that's a partnership to operate point of dispensing of vaccine. So one of, a number of options to vaccinate those who are eligible according to the state and county tiered framework for, for vaccination. Another area has been vaccinating our own city employees. And so we're pleased to vaccinated approximately five hundred city employees who are eligible. So we've sort of progressively worked through that framework. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Alameda County Healthcare Services Agency. Lisa Erickson is the liaison for schools and childcare services. And also just wanted to mention, we also have Min Vu on the line. He's my counterpart over at the school district for emergency management and risk management. And so we'd all be happy to take questions at the end. So to Lisa.
Thanks, Alec. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen because I have a brief presentation to share with you this evening. Just give me a minute here. See. Huh. There we go. Hold on here. All right. Can everyone see it? Okay, great. Okay, so before I get into the details, I was, I thought I would just do a brief overview of kind of where we are in our tier framework for the state. And then I'm just going to talk a little bit about school reopening and then a bit about vaccines. So it's pretty quick. And then as Alex said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of these topics. So first off, many of you all probably, probably already know that we're currently in the red tier. And we're hopefully gradually moving into the orange tier. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what the, what that means on our next slide, but right now we're at three-point-three cases per day per a hundred thousand. And you can see this table here is what you have to kind of reach in order to move through the tiers, the state tiers. So we're hoping that by, maybe by April first, we might actually end up in the orange tier. And this is getting a little easier for us to move through the tiers because the state has been adjusting their framework so that as they increase the vaccines, they're actually going to be letting, kind of changing the criteria for the tiers. So you can kind of open up, basically you're, you can open up easier and, you know, opening will increase as a result of the, of more vaccines happening in the state. So in the red tier, middle schools and high schools are now able to open. Before, in the purple tier, it was just TK through sixth grade. So now middle and higher are able to open. And the state is also allowing some outdoor live events, like sport, get, you know, out, like the A's, the Oakland A's will hopefully be able to start after April first. Also amusement parks. These are some changes to some of the tiers as we begin to reopen. So school reopening, as I mentioned, all TK through twelve, they're all eligible to open right now. It's, it's a pretty straightforward process. All schools need to do is five days before they're open in person, they have to post what they call the COVID safety plan. And there's two parts to this plan. One part is their CAL OSHA prevention plan, which this is kind of, you know, how they're protecting their employees. It has kind of an employee focus. And then there's the school guidance checklist. And this is how they're, you know, the safety measures for making sure that families, students and staff and everyone at the school are safe for reopening. And that will be prominently placed someplace easy to find on their website before opening. And there's a few things that the state, so just to clarify, the state is who puts out the guidance for reopening. The county is able to make it a little more strict if we, if we want to, but for the most part, Alameda County at this point is aligning with almost everything that the state puts out. So everything around the school guidance for reopening is pretty much all being developed by the state. And what they call is, they call this the layers of safety. This is what the state terms all of their, you know, safety mitigation measures for COVID. And really what they're trying to say here is no one thing is most important. Everything should be layered. Some people call this like the Swiss cheese approach. So as long as you have everything in place, if one is a little bit less than the other, you know, you won't have any holes because you're doing everything together. It's a comprehensive approach. The, the three top most important, though, are face coverings, stable groups and physical distancing. And I'm sure many of you have seen in the news that the CDC, as well as, as well as the CDPH, has changed their physical distancing guidance, where now they're, they are allowing between three and six feet. Before it was between four and six feet. So they have changed that recently, actually. The state issued their new guidance. I believe it was on, over the weekend. So that's a very recent change. Now on to vaccination. So this is who we're currently in Alameda County vaccinating. We continue to vaccinate healthcare workers in high-risk congregate settings and people aged sixty-five and over. And we've been vaccinating also the food agricultural workers, all the essential workers, restaurant, grocery workers, emergency service workers and education and childcare workers. So that's what we've been partnering with Alameda County Office of Ed, as well as our childcare team, which I'm going to talk about in a bit, around getting educators and childcare workers vaccinated. And on, starting on March fifteenth, we started to vaccinate people aged sixteen, between sixteen and sixty-four with high-risk medical conditions and disabilities, public transit workers, janitors, utility workers and people experiencing homelessness. And as I mentioned, we've been partnering really closely with Alameda County, County Office of Education. They've been doing very targeted outreach to our educators across the county. They've been working with the state to get individual codes to all the educators so they could get vaccinated at the Coliseum site. They've also been doing, you know, working with the community pods as well as pharmacies. They also had a FEMA mobile unit actually show up at the, the County Office of Education. And they have also been partnering very closely with the Fremont Unified School District, which our tenant will talk about in a bit. And then I've also been partnering really closely with the Early Care and Education Emergency Response Team. And this is a team of people from across the county that are helping coordinate for our childcare providers. And we believe that it's hard to know exactly how many childcare providers have been vaccinated. We don't really have that data, but we have heard that many childcare providers are, are getting out there, getting vaccinated. And we continue to do outreach to this population as well. And because vaccine has been, you know, we haven't had, we still don't have enough supply, we have prioritized, at least at the beginning, around priority zip codes. And for those who have been providing in-person education, I believe by now, though, because we've had so many more options for vaccines, most educators, I think, who want a vaccine at this point have been able to get vaccinated. And this is just a little bit about the county. And all this information is on our website. So you can always access our website and it's updated regularly. And so right now, approximately nineteen percent of those sixteen or over have been fully vaccinated and thirty-four percent have received at least one dose. And we can see over here at Fremont, twenty-nine percent have received at least one dose and around approximately seventeen percent have been fully vaccinated. And this is just a little bit on the race ethnicity that you can see. Let's see. Something is a little thingish. There we go. So it's about thirty percent white, twenty-three percent Latino, Hispanic, Asian is about thirty-five percent, and then African-American black is approximately six-point-five percent. Now my screen is not moving for some reason. I don't know why. I think that was, oh, there we go. This is my last slide. So even though folks are getting vaccinated, we always want to, and you know, and we are opening up and our cases are, you know, good news, or cases are decreasing, we still really want to make sure that everyone knows they need to wear a mask, wash your hands, watch, watch your distance, wait to see loved ones. And when it's your turn, get vaccinated. My dogs are barking. Sorry about that in the background. And that's it. Thank you for.
Thank you. We're not, we're not taking any more public comment, are we, Ms. Sandoval?
No.
No. Okay, okay, great. And then with that, I will bring it back to our liaison committee to see if there's any comments or questions. I don't want to call on you. You can raise your hand or you can do this or shout out. And I'll, I'll call on you. I do see Superintendent Kamm.
Thank you very much, Trustee Campbell. I just wanted to publicly extend my thanks to Lisa and her team. As I was mentioning earlier, we meet about every two weeks with all the superintendents in the county. And she has just been a remarkable resource for school districts throughout the county. She's been readily available when our staff needs to reach her with a pointed question about what we might need to do with something. And I just wanted to extend my compliments and gratitude for her and her hard work.
Thank you so much. And I'm just going to put that right back on you because you have been working so hard, I know, to reopen schools and do everything you can. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. That, that was a great presentation. And I don't see any questions or comments for the, I see. Councilmember Sawon, did your hand go up?
It's just a curiosity question. Are there certain groups that are seeking vaccinations in less percentage compared to their population?
That is a very good question. I, I'm going to have to, I'll get back to you on that. I have kind of a hunch around that, but I don't have the actual data. So I don't want to try to answer it and be incorrect, but that's a good question. And I will get back to you. I know that, I can say that I know that we're doing a lot of outreach in our neighborhoods that have been hardest hit by COVID. So that's been our priority, right? So East Oakland, Ashland, Cherryland, West Oakland, South Hayward, just to name a few. But I, I don't know exactly, you know, the, the populations that are, that aren't seeking vaccines.
And on the two plans that, that the City of Fremont is responsible for, do we have those plans in place?
Yes.
Yes, we do have a emergency operations plan, which was adopted in the last calendar year. And it's pretty common practice in local governments that there's sort of a base plan, which is what we have. And then from there, there are plan annexes, which kind of build out the functional areas. So for example, mask care and sheltering following an earthquake or other disaster or emergency transportation and evacuation. So those are scenarios where we have some further, further work to do, which we will continue to work on.
Thank you.
And the, the, in the presentation that Lisa gave, the two plans that you were talking about, the OSHA, what we're going to do, and then the other plan that talks about, was it PPE and all of the protective stuff and that kind of stuff, we have that as a district already, correct? Yes.
Yes, that's correct. Ours was published February first and it's gone all the way to CDPH and they did not give us any negative feedback. So we are in good standing with our COVID safety plan as a school district.
Okay, thank you. Trustee King. Trustee King. Councilmember King.
All right. Yeah, thank you so much, Lisa, for your presentation and all your work. And I, I, from all the reporting, I think, you know, we've really been making great progress getting the vaccinations down the last couple of months. So it's really great news. And I, I'm wondering, maybe if Superintendent Kevin might have this answer, is I'm wondering if, if the school district is requiring the teachers to get vaccinated, teachers and staff, and also, you know, how are, you know, do we have like stats? How are the staff and teachers getting vaccinated? Like what percentage or if all of them are getting vaccinated? Thank you.
Thank you. I can happily answer those questions. We are not mandating that our employees get the vaccine. The state has not mandated the vaccine. And so neither have most school districts that I know of. But certainly Fremont has not mandated the vaccine as a condition of employment. And I'll talk about it a little bit more in my presentation, but in terms of statistics, we, I think, have, thanks to local partnerships with Howlers and Fremont Fire, I think we've been able to outperform many large school districts in the Bay Area. To date, we've been able to invite over four thousand of our employees to an appointment for a vaccination. So now how many have taken advantage of that or have taken the vaccine? That's data that we don't collect directly at the moment, but we do track how many people we have invited to vaccine appointments. So I can talk a little bit more about that in my presentation, but I think we've, we've done remarkably well for a school district our size in the Bay Area.
Okay. Okay, so I have one in the interest of liaison. And I hear, I heard earlier, steering. How can the school district and the city, it looks like we're working pretty closely together already, but is there something more that we need to do that could help during this crisis that we perhaps hadn't thought about? Don't all answer at one time now.
I think we've had a.
Together.
Min and I and others have had a, a good and productive kickoff meeting. And I would really view it as a continued partnership. I think that linkage between our Emergency Operations Center and a disaster in the school districts is, is really critical. And so, you know, through future planning efforts and training and exercises, those would be good areas for us to continue to keep in touch.
Okay. Do you have a community engagement committee or, or department that really meets on a regular basis with the community to work on these kinds of issues as well?
I think that's been a bit limited during COVID-nineteen. And I think that something, you know, sort of subject to the resources where, you know, we, we'd very much like to step that back up. We've done a lot of work historically through our Community Emergency Response Team and Personal Emergency Preparedness Training. We've done a lot of work historically through our community emergency response team and personal emergency preparedness training. And so that's been really a critical outreach arm to the community to kind of build up that baseline of disaster preparedness. And another area that I think we can look at resurrecting is our local disaster council, which is, you know, a great forum to pull different, not only city agencies, but partners together and, and publicly collect the input that we need to be successful in, in emergency preparedness.
One thing that, that I keep hearing is the W's, you know, wash your hand, watch your distance, wear your face coverings. And when it's your turn, get your vaccine. I've been fully vaccinated, so I'm really happy about that. But I'm wondering if we could collaborate on those issues because we are still seeing people, even though you get your, your, you're fully vaccinated. You get your second shot, you still have two more weeks in which you have to, where you are, you know, still at, at a higher risk of still being able to contact or contract the virus. So I'm wondering if there needs to be some campaign or some kind of effort around continuing to push out your W's. So people will, will actually know that and this, that's an area and where the district and the school, the school district and the city could collaborate on. Because people are still testing positive for, for the virus. And so we still have to continue to use all of those safety precautions because people are still getting them. So is there a way, and maybe that's not a question that we could answer right now, but in terms of collaborating together to share that message or to, to be the trusted messengers to get that message out to our public, particularly the ones that we talked about earlier. The hard to reach communities that we are probably get a, if you could send that to Mrs. Sandoval, she'll make sure it gets to all of us. If we can, if we could use that as maybe the boilerplate for us to be actually getting those messages out. Okay, I'm just going to leave it there because, oh, trustee, I mean, Councilmember King.
Yes, I, I think it may be a misconception that you won't get COVID after you are vaccinated. So even two weeks, like I think it, it does help you avoid being majorly, you know, having like major symptoms, being really ill from, from COVID, but it won't prevent you from getting it. So I think, you know, even after two weeks or after you're vaccinated, we should all still be wearing our masks.
I agree, but that message has to get out. Councilmember Sawon?
I just to follow up on the outreach aspect, I think Suzanne Wolf had some youth that were doing the mask on campaign. So maybe that's something we could pass along to them to work on. That's something we can collaborate on.
We're happy to pass that along. I also think that both of our communications teams work still very closely together. And they'll be continuing to push out the messages that we receive from Alameda County Public Health that Lisa forwards to us and all of the teams do forward to us. We both continue to get the messages out from Alameda County Public Health on a regular basis and will continue to do so.
Okay. And are we also sending those messages to some of our CBOs in the area? So that they can help with disseminating that information to, because they would be trusted messengers for some of their hard to reach communities.
I'll turn that to Lisa to answer for how public health is reaching out to our community-based partners.
Yeah, I think we have a whole outreach strategy and we have a health equity approach where we are teaming really closely with CBOs. To, because they are the trusted messengers and I think we actually even have contracts with CBOs to help us with that outreach. However, I don't know exactly which CBOs are in Fremont, but I can, I can find out for you and let you know. But yeah, we definitely have a pretty strong CBO approach to get that message out. And we have been working with youth organizations as well to help, to help us develop the messages, to see what might resonate and to help us with dissemination.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I won't, I won't speak for our superintendent, but I suspect that the school district would also like to be a part of your trusted messengers and get that information out to our families and our communities. Because we got thirty-five thousand students, so that's sixty thousand if you say just one, right? Plus people that we can reach quickly and efficiently to, to ensure that people have accurate information to keep themselves and their families safe. Okay. Okay, thank you very much for that, Lisa and Alec. We appreciate it. Next up on our agenda, I'm really going to try to keep us to an hour tonight, guys. Status of school reopening with Superintendent Campbell.
Thank you very much, Trustee Campbell, and I will try not to keep us long as well. But this is a brief update and I think it ties in very directly with a lot of what Lisa shared. And I believe Ms. Sandoval is pulling up the presentation already. And as we kind of indicated in the beginning, slide, slide number two, if you could move to that, please, Ms. Sandoval, really highlights the, the partnership. And I want to thank the city and especially Mayor May. Lisa can confirm that I was kind of going everywhere I could across the county and anywhere I could to try and find a partnership to get our employees access to the vaccine. And very luckily, we had Howlers reach out and Mayor May reached out to me. We were able to all connect the lines of communication and set up this great partnership. And through the support of Howlers and Fremont Fire, as I shared earlier, I think we've been far above other large scale districts in the Bay Area in offering forty-four hundred of our employees an invitation to get the vaccine. And that wasn't all through Howlers, but they made that increase so possible. Because Alameda County in and of itself was ahead of many of our neighboring counties with beginning the vaccine administration. And so with the FEMA site, our employees were able to register there for their vaccine. And I compliment our employees for being diligent, as was noted earlier, when it's your turn, go get your vaccine. And a great number of our employees took advantage of the FEMA site in Oakland and their qualification under phase one B. And with so many getting appointments at the FEMA site, we were able to send out a lot of invitations to the Howler site and fill up as many spots as we could in each vaccination clinic. And through that, we've been able to get, as was stated earlier, pretty much everybody who wanted a vaccine access or an opportunity. There are a few exceptions to that comment. We have employees who work across, who work for Fremont that live across the Bay Area and not every county had the same access. So we're doing our best to also try and support our employees who live in other counties that may not have had such ease in accessing the vaccine as Alameda County residents who were also educators or considered education employees under phase one B. So again, my sincere compliments to Howlers, to Fremont Fire, to the city of Fremont and to the mayor for connecting the dots for a bunch of people who are trying really hard to come together to, to create a good outcome for our staff and ultimately for our students. And on the next page, I want to talk a little bit about our dashboard. There's a lot that's being communicated right now about the return to campus. And there's a lot of intense emotion around that on many sides of the equation. We certainly understand that. I, as a parent of an eighth grader and a fifth grader, understand the many challenges of distance learning and being sheltered in place and the impact that it has on children. It has certainly had an impact on my own children and my own family. But we are excited about the potential return for students to campus. We're hoping to bring them back in the immediate future. We are in active negotiations with the labor unions about an agreement to do so. And we have a readiness dashboard that's been posted. Our community can go to our website and see that readiness dashboard. That dashboard, that dashboard also includes a link to our COVID safety plan, which Lisa talked about earlier. Also very exciting that we were able to launch our learning hubs on March eighth and to very quickly address what our learning hubs are for clarification. These are opportunities for students who may have more intensive needs to come to campus to participate in their distance learning program. It does not mean that these students are coming to campus for in-person instruction from their certificated teacher. But these might be students who need a structured environment. They might need technology access. They might need additional supports and a stable environment for the day. And all of our schools are able to provide learning hubs for our students right now. And I've visited a number of those programs and schools. Our custodians have done an amazing job, our campus supervisors, our principals. And we have new duty supervisors and campus supervisors and other classified staff who've stepped up to staff those. And it's really been great to see some students back on campus. And we've really heard some anecdotal evidence about what a difference it's made for a number of our families. So that is just a great experience and we're certainly looking to add to that as we bring more and more students back to campus. We did add some new things to the dashboard and so you want to always check that out regularly. This is a little bit about our phased in approach, which is encompassed in our COVID safety plan. And phase one is our special education in-person assessment program. We have an MOU in place for that with our labor union and that's already been happening. As I mentioned, phase two is learning hubs. Phase three and four are our return to campus for preschool, elementary, and ultimately secondary. And as is noted there, those are the target dates that we have put out to our community. And we're actively negotiating with our labor unions around that return. And as is noted on this slide, no agreement has been reached yet. And these are subject to negotiated agreements with our unions. So those things are subject to change, but we are certainly working very hard to bring our students back to campus as soon as possible. And I believe that to be true across the board. On our next slide, the question that we hear a lot is about why would we use a hybrid model? And I think as Lisa indicated, things change pretty rapidly as we've all learned through this last year. And the hybrid model is really based on the physical distancing requirements that exist for us. And we've been operating under the parameters of six feet of physical distancing. And with that, we're not able to return all of our students to campus at once and maintain that physical distancing. So because of that, we've looked at a hybrid model as most school districts have across the Bay Area. And that does allow for a return. I also want to acknowledge, because I've heard from a number of parents and community members and guardians, that there still will be an option for students to remain in distance learning that is required under SB ninety-eight. But we also want to provide that optional in-person instruction for students who desire to return. And there are challenges that we acknowledge with a hybrid. And we know that it will not be the same as a traditional return to campus, that there will be impacts to the instructional program. And we're going to do our very best to work with our labor partners to minimize any negative impacts on our students so that we can bring them back for a safe and expedient return. In that process, as an example, we surveyed our TK through sixth grade families. And when I say sixth grade for elementary, Patty, if you could move to the next slide, please. For Fremont Unified, when we say sixth grade, that includes some of our elementary programs because they still include sixth grade. Some of our sixth graders are on the junior high middle school campus. But specific to our preschool and TK through six elementary programs, we asked families to declare if they would be returning. And you can see the data in front of you, just under seventeen percent said they'd like to return to in-person with a hybrid schedule. Just under fifty-four percent said they'd like to remain in distance learning. And almost thirty percent said that their most important condition is that their child can stay with their current teacher and they'd be willing to accept in-person instruction or distance learning if it meant they could stay with their current teacher. And we can't make a unilateral guarantee with that, but certainly is something that we're keeping a close eye on. And somebody asked, why would we need to change courses or change teachers at the elementary level? And as you can understand, school districts are staffed at a certain level based on enrollment. And that's how we're funded as well. And when we try and deliver the in-person program we traditionally have, which we've done for years and years and years or decades and decades, then we transition rapidly into a distance learning program. And now we're in this world where we're trying to operate and exist in both worlds at the same time. And that creates a very difficult circumstance with a limited resource of personnel that we have across the entire district. So while we don't want to create circumstances where our students have to change teachers, it may be an unintended consequence for some students and we're working very hard to minimize that impact. As you probably know, as we move to the next slide, there's been significant movement at the state level in terms of legislation related to the return to campus. So Assembly Bill, Senate Bill eighty-six is the in-person instruction grants that have been passed. And these are, as you may know, grants that school districts don't have to apply for. They are automatically provided to school districts if school districts meet certain criteria. The criteria is that by April first, districts need to provide in-person instruction. And in-person instruction means that students TK through sixth grade, in addition to one secondary grade level at least, and all students identified within AB eighty-six as subgroups, which could include our foster youth, students without permanent housing, students with disabilities, disengaged pupils. There's a number of categories that are identified there. We need to provide in-person instruction for all of those subgroups TK through twelve and all students in grades TK through six at the elementary level, plus an additional secondary level. If school districts are able to do that, they qualify for this grant funding. If school districts are not able to do that after April first, their grant funding is reduced by one percent for each instructional day. So weekends wouldn't count, spring break wouldn't count as a one percent decrease. If school districts are not able to do that by May fifteenth, then that grant money just goes away and you don't receive any of that grant money. On the next slide, you'll see a little bit of a reference for what I've already talked about with in-person instruction. And you can see where we are in the red tier and as Lisa indicated, hopefully moving to the orange tier soon. You can see where it specifies what needs to be provided to students and also what kind of testing may need to be provided as well. So as I mentioned, Fremont Unified has a COVID safety plan. It's already been checked off by the California Department of Public Health. And based on some provisions within AB eighty-six, we'll bring that forward for board approval at our meeting tomorrow night. But we're very confident in our safety plan. And this just highlights some of those groups that I mentioned on the bottom of the chart. You can see in the purple tier, if we were still there, there's some more restrictions in that it's specific to transitional kindergarten and only specialized cohorts at a higher level. But we're grateful that we're in the red tier, hopefully continuing that trend towards orange and at some point in the future hitting yellow. In addition to the in-person grant, that you can go to the next slide, please, Ms. Sandoval. Thank you. In addition to the in-person grant, we also, under AB or SB eighty-six, will receive an expanded learning opportunity grant. These are grants to help deal with learning loss and a number of other things, which include student needs, extended learning time, professional development, social emotional learning, access to school meals. And there's a wide range of areas that are targeted within AB eighty-six. It does specify that eighty-five percent of these funds need to be used for activities provided in person. And there's also a call out in this funding, which I have not seen before, but I think it is important that ten percent of the grant must be used to employ paraprofessionals to support with learning loss and instruction. And that is something that we are watching closely as a district because we have great paraprofessionals. We see great value in their work, but it is an interesting allocation model from the state that they are mandating one-time grant funds go to personnel. And so we do not have a provision to only hire parrot educators for a limited scope of employment. So we need to be mindful of how we make those employment gains as required under AB eighty-six and handle the transition when the one-time dollars go away. And we do have to adopt a plan by June first under AB eighty-six. That plan has to be adopted by the board, which details the use of the spending. And it also requires community and school site input, much like our LCAP plan would. And for Fremont Unified School District, these were our projected numbers. A few days ago, the state released the actual numbers and our actual numbers are pretty close to this. But the in-person grant that I mentioned earlier is just over ten million dollars. And that is specific to opening our campuses at April first or a date thereafter. And that ten million dollars would be the amount that decreases one percent per day that we're not meeting all the criteria. The twenty-one point six million dollars, that money would come to us as an expanded learning opportunity grant. And it is not connected to the in-person instruction grant for opening between April first and May fifteenth. But both provide an opportunity to garner funding for our students and for our staff to help address the many challenges that we've seen arise during distance learning and during this pandemic. and for our staff to help address the many challenges that we've seen arise during distance learning and during this pandemic. And we look forward to being able to have community input, staff input, and board conversation and ultimately board direction on how we expend those funds. So as Lisa pointed out also, there are new tiers that are coming into play. One of them has already come into play and that's based on two million vaccines being administered within specific zip codes across the state. None of those zip codes are in Fremont. But the ability for the state to provide vaccinations through their equity approach has resulted in a different shift in the tiers. It's not overly significant as it relates to schools. I don't want to make a comment on how significant it is for businesses or anybody else. My focus is really on what it means for schools. And it did not create a real tangible change for us because we were already in the red tier. We've continued to see updated youth sports guidance. And certainly appreciate seeing that. Just recently, we saw new updates regarding band, drama, choir, and some other student activities as the state continues to modify their guidance there. And in terms of collective bargaining, as I mentioned, we're actively in negotiations with our labor unions. There's a lot of conversation about how that's going. And we certainly understand the interest from our community, from our students, from our staff. And we are all focused on reaching an agreement that can bring our students back to campus in the immediate future and that we can make sure that return is safe for students and staff. The next steps that we'll be taking as we, as we wrap up, as I mentioned, we'll be seeking board action on the twenty-fourth for our safety plan. We'll continue with our negotiations. We are continuing with our site preparations. Examples would include, we have air purification units ordered for every classroom. Our TK through second grade classrooms are already ready to go. Our middle school classrooms are ready to go. Our facility staff is working overtime to get the remaining classrooms outfitted. And our business team and our purchasing team has done a great job with acquiring those units and getting them out quickly. And we also have signage up for physical distancing. As you would imagine, as you see out in your travels in the world, those same things are happening on our school sites. And we're also concurrently planning for learning loss mitigation based on the funding, social emotional learning needs. As we understand, the pandemic has really shown very brightly a light on the comprehensive approach and the comprehensive need that school sites have for students. For a long time, I think we really looked at our schools for teaching and learning and reading and writing, more specifically, and math and science. But we see with the school closure, how important the ecosystem of a comprehensive school environment is for families and for students. And we're certainly planning for the instructional year. Very excited about the potential to have a pretty comprehensive return in the future. Things like the CDC guidance indicating that a universal mask mandate can help us decrease some of the fiscal, physical distancing requirements in the future, does allow us some more flexibility. And we look forward to planning an exciting opportunity for learning in a comprehensive way for the next school year as well. So we're certainly working on that concurrently. I'd be happy to answer any questions from our trustees, council members, or city staff.
I try to unmute myself and then my face moves, keeps moving. I keep moving. I can't find myself anymore. Thank you so much, CJ, for that comprehensive presentation. Okay, I'll bring this back. I can't tell whose hand went up first. So I'll just go by who I see first. Councilmember Solon.
Thank you, trustee. And thank you, superintendent. So the CDC came out with some new guidelines. Have we factored those into the reopening plan?
Well, there's, there's two components to that, council member. One is our COVID safety plan, and that's a living document. So that COVID safety plan is always going to update with new guidance. And I think as Lisa indicated, the CDC puts out guidance, but we more directly look at what the California Department of Public Health does. And even more locally, the greatest authority for us really is Alameda County Public Health. And Alameda County Public Health has aligned itself in most cases with California Department of Public Health. And they did announce over the weekend the three feet of physical distancing. That's certainly something that we're keeping our eye on. But our current negotiations and our COVID safety plan also include six feet. So it's not something that necessarily equates to an immediate change. But it is something that we're keeping our eye on.
I appreciate that thoughtful approach. There's a lot of passion within the community and even we're getting a lot of emails from all sides. So how is the school district trying to bring the community together to sell whatever we decide?
Well, ultimately, we're working very hard as a district to continue to have a voice of unity, to continue to have a voice of collaboration and remaining solution focused. And so we are working hard to keep our community updated with what's happening at the bargaining table, even though that can be very nuanced. And I'm very hopeful that once we reach a tentative agreement, we can come up with a very clear community message that indicates our joint interest from all parties within Fremont Unified School District to return our students and our staff safely to campus. So as we reach those agreements, we're very excited to help unify our community around that idea, but also to honor the many viewpoints within our community. Because I also hear from a number of families that are very concerned about sending their children back in the moment. So I think it's working hard to honor all of the voices in our community, but most certainly bringing together a voice of unity around the plan that is, that is finally approved, once that happens for the return.
Thank you. I appreciate your efforts in outreach and whatever we can do to increase communication. I think that can help fill the void of misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We could certainly use, you know, trusted messengers in this conversation as well to ensure that accurate information is being disseminated. And not only is it accurate, but it's respectful communication because we all understand how difficult this is. This is an extremely difficult time for families. It's an extremely difficult time. I mean, I've been adversely impacted by COVID. I've had family members who's passed away because they had COVID. And so I understand, and I'm not, you know, we're not insensitive to the plights of everybody in the community because everybody has been touched by this. So if we have trusted messengers who could also help disseminate accurate and honest information to the public about what we're doing, that would be very, very helpful for us as well. Trustee Zhang.
Hi. Well, I just want to thank Superintendent Kimmich's comprehensive presentation. And I also appreciate that we actually posted the, the update in our website so that we can give community the transparency to inform them what's going on daily. And also I'm glad that, you know, the superintendent and the staff has been working very hard. And we have offered, you know, over four thousand employee the opportunity to get vaccination. So as always, we have one mission. It's students-focused, students first. We're going to keep working at it until we reach a goal. And so brings students and the teachers safely back to campus. And thank you guys so much.
Thank you, trustee Zhang. Okay, thank you, trustee Zhang. Councilmember Kane.
Thank you, trustee Campbell, and thank you, Superintendent Kimmich, for your presentation. I know that this is very difficult for everyone and you guys have been working really hard, you know, all the, all the parties. And I think, you know, a lot of parents, some of the parents who are the minority that want to return, they are, you know, very anxious, you know, for trying to return sooner for their children's sake. And for, for us, my, one of my kid, the fourth grader, has been attending the learning hub. So it's been very safe and he has, he's like so excited to go to school. Every Tuesday, Thursday, he gets, gets up early and, you know, excited to go and come home happy. So we're very appreciative of all your efforts. You know, that's a first step towards, you know, reopening. And the, the school staff and everyone certainly have been working very hard. I, I wanted to see if we can, if you can help me clarify some, what are some of the criterias for the in-person instruction grant that were, you know, looking towards meeting, you know, even after April first? So if we're, if we're looking, you know, if we're looking good, you know, to meet those criterias.
So that's, that's a great question. In terms of the grant for the just over ten million dollars, our estimates were ten point two. I think it might be a little bit higher by a couple hundred thousand when, when we actually get the calculation from the state. But in terms of how we look for that, that's really going to be dependent on where our final agreements come out of negotiations. And I don't want to go too far into, you know, where we are with those positions. But ultimately, what we have proposed as target dates would put us qualifying for the, and let me rephrase that so that I can be clear. What the district has proposed as the target dates for a return to campus would put us as qualifying for those dollars effective April nineteenth. So as you saw in the presentation, we've outlined a phased-in approach. And the target dates originally stated and published were March twenty-ninth. And those dates may change based on negotiated agreements or proposals. But between the twenty-ninth and the nineteenth of April, that would be the phasing in time for our return. So once we got to the nineteenth, we would, under the district's proposals, meet the criteria for qualifying for the funding. And with the spring break being in there in between, if everything went as proposed by the district, it would be roughly five or six days that we would not qualify for the funding. And I would estimate that to be around six hundred thousand dollars in total out of the ten million. But the remaining amount would be something that we would qualify for. And I, I just want to highlight that I'm making that as a statement in terms of what we proposed because that's what I want to continue to talk about is not a value judgment on any proposals. But those are the dates that we have put out on behalf of the district to the community. And I'm sure that both negotiating teams are working hard to try and come to an agreement. But that would be the, the qualifying condition is I see it based on what we've stated publicly.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah. I, I know that, you know, the, the school, it's like a very delicate, you know, situation. And this, the school district certainly can use, you know, any additional funding, you know, for our schools. So yeah, I appreciate all your work and hopefully we can reach an agreement soon to get some students back on campus.
Thank you, councilmember Kane. I don't see any other hands in the queue for anything else. Did anyone from the city have any questions or comments that they'd like to make? Now would be the time to do that. Okay, seeing none. Next up on our agenda, thank you guys so much for this excellent presentation on the vaccine in our, in our community. I guess I could pose the same question that I posed earlier. Is there any way that we can collaborate more on schools reopening in terms of the city and the school district working together to get information out to families that is accurate and factual and kind? Okay, just pointing, superintendent?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think as Suzanne mentioned earlier, I think our communication departments have a good rapport and practice of working together. So we can work with our communication department and theirs to consider how we can support messaging to keep our community informed of what's happening. And especially, we are working on the final touches of a video for our community to see about what it's going to look like for students in terms of being back on campus, being in a classroom, being in a, in a face mask, making sure that we're using hand sanitizers, washing our hands. And I've been very grateful for the work that our staff has done in preparing that video. And hopefully, when we finish that in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours, we could work with the city on some distribution plans for that as well so that it gives some context to our students and our families of what it may feel like, what it may look like with some of what I would kind of describe as our universal precautions that we're already using out in the world, wearing our masks, keeping our distance, washing our hands. So I think that'll be a, a great tool that we can help share out together.
Okay, sounds wonderful. I was just thinking of the fact that in reality, we do, here in Fremont, we have lots and lots of families that don't have any children in the district yet, don't have any children in the district because they're grandparents or have children in the district because they're grandparents. And so we have a whole community that really needs to hear not just what's happening on a citywide basis, but also what's happening in the schools. And I think they would be very interested to know because they could be getting false information about the spread of the virus coming from schools and coming from kids. And so we want to make sure that we give them accurate information about what's happening in our schools as well. And I see some more hands that have come up. Trustee, I'm sorry, councilmember Solon.
You like to make us join your board, huh?
Yeah, you could have my job. You want to switch?
No, thank you. It's a handful. Better you than me. And I appreciate all that you guys do. Yes. My kids are precious. So I definitely appreciate our school district and our school board members who have a lot of work and long meetings. So in the spirit of having short meetings, I'll, I'll keep my comments quick. So I, yes, I think we definitely would love to support the efforts of the school district. You know, some of the decisions will be made at your level. You just have to pass that on to us and then we can get the word out. So we're happy to do that on our end. But you've got some difficult decisions to make in the next few weeks. So we look forward to supporting your decision and making sure that we speak with one voice in Fremont.
Appreciate that very much, councilmember, because that's really very important for the leadership in Fremont to be sort of have one unified message that we are in this together and hopefully we'll be stronger when we come out. Trustee Kane, I mean, councilwoman Kane. Why do I keep calling you trustee? I think I must still think I'm president of the board or something.
Yeah, so, yeah, I wanted to communicate that I had some organizations that reach out to me that they're working with, for example, like the Jewish Coalition. And so they have like volunteers that are helping students doing like with tutoring, like one-on-one touring they can do over Zoom. So they wanted to, you know, see they were very much like to work with our students. And, you know, I know a lot of students are having a hard time. So they can do that safely at home with, with some help, tutoring help.
Okay, good. If you could share that information with Mrs. Sandoval, she can get that off to us. And we could, we could share with our school community as well.
Okay, sounds good.
I'm not speaking for the superintendent, but we'll give it to the superintendent's office and he'll decide what we'll do with it from there.
All right, great.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands. So the only thing that's up on our agenda next is what we would like to see on our next agenda. I think that we would love to hear from the city, any items that they think that we could, you know, continue to collaborate on. I, I think that we've made some real progress on our efforts to collaborate on school reopening and vaccine updates and being, you know, using our lines and chains of communication to be able to communicate these messages to our community to keep them safe. Is there any items that any of the trustees or the council members would like to ask for our next agenda? Not yet. I believe that we had had a running list that we had with Karina.
Yes, we, we've gone through the list and have brought most of those items to you. And so as we receive additional items, our staff bring items forward every month, which they share with us that they'd like to bring to you. We share those resources with each other and identify what comes forward to the, the committee through our shared, shared resources with each other and identify what comes before you.
Okay, thank you. I think we may have more opportunities to do more things as students start to come back on campus. I think we're sort of limited in terms of what we can do right now because we are still in a stay-at-home order. We're still in the distance learning environment. So I think that there will be more opportunities to collaborate in the future. So I think that there will be more opportunities to collaborate in the future. Karina, I saw you unmuted. Did you have something that you wanted to say?
Hi, thank you. No, I think Suzanne covered it, covered it all.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Trustee Zhang.
Oh, I have a question. So is that next time, you know, we alternate meetings, agenda? Is the next time is the cities decide the agenda items?
We work collaboratively on the agenda items, but yes, we would like to, we want to hear what they have to say as well, but yes.
I see. Yeah, I believe there's more to come after school, you know, is safely opened. We definitely need cities' help.
Definitely. Councilmember Solwan.
Yeah, I think we've got our hands full with COVID on both sides. So I think we have a lot to talk about, especially as we reopen and plus all the budget impacts that both jurisdictions are having. So I think we should continue that conversation until we have more developments.
Okay, thank you very much. That would be great. Okay. So seeing no more hands, I think we could adjourn the meeting. I promised you an hour, but okay, an hour and ten. So it's better than an hour and a half, right? Okay, guys, thank you so much. Have a wonderful rest of your evening. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.